Stream.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready. Good to go. It's three oh seven. It's time to convene the grand. The. Economic Development Advisory Board meeting for March. Twenty nine, twenty twenty three. Welcome everyone. Opening items, welcome and introductions around the room and around the screen. So let's start with folks who are online. Maybe Kelly.
I'm Kelly Thornton with the Department of Workforce Services. I don't know about anyone else online, but I'm getting a serious echo. I'm wondering if maybe somebody else who's signed in needs to mute. I don't know. It's good to be here.
Thanks for the point.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shaili Bryant. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person today, but I will be present for the meeting.
Welcome. Shaili is our secretary for the board and obviously a traveling mom today. Denise.
Hi, Jose Nenez, private sector. I do get also some sound issue. Looks like it's freezing in the meeting room, but if I can catch it up, I will definitely drive down there and I'll be joining in person. Thank you.
Wonderful. Let's get to the J's. Jasmine.
Hi, Jasmine Duncan, Mayor Town of Castle Valley.
Jack.
Hi, Jenny Cleason, Travel Council Advisory Board. We're at Hillier.
Thanks for joining us today, Jenny.
Thanks for the invitation. Excited.
Is Sarah there?
Sarah's here. Hi, I'm Sarah Kyle. I'm with Powerhouse Events. It's good to see you all.
Thanks for being here.
My pleasure.
Chris. You're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Chris Barrett, Grand County Budget Officer, Strategic Development Director.
Wonderful. Do we miss anybody who's online?
Carly.
Carly and.
Carly.
Who's Lisa?
As we saw on the CD. Carly.
I believe.
Mengers, Walkmore City.
I think someone else can.
We know who she is, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's turn around the table.
Miss Melissa, thank you.
Yeah.
Elisa is, I'm here. I don't have my video on, sorry. Planning and zoning director, non-voting member.
Where is she?
She's under the logo, behind the logo.
Okay.
That's why I didn't know that she was here. Melissa.
Melissa Jumper, citizen in the county.
Welcome.
New board member.
Yes.
First meeting, isn't it?
Very excited. Yes.
Good.
Welcome.
Mary McGann, Commissioner.
I'm Forrest Rogers.
Mary Ball, USU, we're first of all.
Karen Guzman, Newt.
Chris Wilson, over the board.
Rob Walker, local community childcare.
Ben Alter, Economic Development Special.
I'm August Grant.
And we should mention that Rob Walker is an emeritus member of this board, or maybe he's just an alum of this board. But not standing, he's here and he's got something to share with us in a little while. This is my first meeting as your chair, and so forgive me if I misstep, misspeak, and please call to my attention if I've overlooked something, okay? To begin, we've had introductions, the opportunity not to state any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or ex parte communication.
What would ex parte communication be able for?
It's a great question. I'm not, I'm not really sure. I'm not, I'm not by law. Nor am I.
I assume you did.
Pardon? Mary, what is it in the commission content?
Oh, well, if there's like you're in its owning, you know, working on a zoning or somebody's asking for a zone change and you communicate with them outside of the chambers, you know, say you have a conversation. City market or they call you, you have a lot of tax for a zone change. You have to say, you have to figure it out so that all people in the body have knowledge of what it is. Because that's why it's safe. It's every race, everybody that's in the board should have the same information. Right. So I'm trying to, you know, where this is an advisory board on this. And if anybody thinks of the answer, you know.
Sounds like we're getting some bad audio in the room. Is it so bad that you can't really? Can people hear anything at all?
It depends on who's speaking. So Ben, you're very clear. It's in and out.
Yeah.
If anyone could try just reconnecting, just you might as well to try reconnecting.
Okay, I think it's, yeah.
We are always.
I think it's just the wifi.
I don't know if trying a hotspot would help, like if somebody had, if you guys have full cell cell bars on your phones. I don't know if that would be better, but it's an idea.
Just give you, you just have audio only. That's a good phone.
I was very excited, but you.
Maybe there's a setting there. Let's just start. Okay, well, this is an easy thing. We're gonna try. Can someone just say something again?
I think it, it sounds okay right now with, we can, I can hear everything you guys are saying and it's not cutting out, so.
Okay, can Karen, can you say something?
Can you hear me? I'm at the end of the table.
Yep, we can hear Karen.
Sounds clear.
Okay, good, great. Okay. Nice, Ben.
We've avoided the unplug and plug in again strategy for fixing that. Thank you very much. Notice that what we're trying to do, we, we're going to spend on each topic. The goal of that is to create some longer time later on the agenda to have some conversations about where we go post HB four sixteen. So that's a goal there. So first thing, the, we're a month away from the grand summit. And it's an opportunity for us all to hear about that for those of us who weren't able to be there. So I will turn that over to Ben.
Before we get there, of course, I think we should acknowledge it's a day citizens to be heard.
Okay.
And then I have just a brief presentation to kick us off.
Oh, you do? Okay. I did not know that. So let's go to that. Citizens to be heard.
Brad, did you have anything you wanted to add as a citizen?
Nope, I just listened in.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. That seems covered then. There's no one in the waiting room, but okay. Okay. Need a while. Oh, great. How do I do the carrot and you share? And then. What did they say, Brad? Okay, can everybody?
Okay, cool. This is not a really long one. I just wanted to tee up some context for the discussions on, at the front end of the meeting on Royal County Grants, so that, you know, board members have context in terms of what those mean, what those numbers mean in context. And also provide kind of a brief piece of context and an opportunity for folks to ask questions. Chris, potentially on kind of diversification TRT monies and where that stands. So to start with, we have a lot of the conversation on the front end of this meeting as regards to the funding received last year for the Royal County Grant fiscal year twenty three to states fiscal year July to June. So we need to spend that money basically out of our coppers by the end of June of this year. And I want to provide some con. Okay. And so this column here is what was in the original application from this board to the state at the end of August, excuse me, at the beginning of September, were these categories which we said this is what we'd like to fund, basically. So with that in mind, I put in the amount of money that has either been already allocated or proposing to discuss today. And so those are itemized down here, or proposers spend expenditures. So we've already allocated, recommended eighteen thousand for the D restriction compliance software that are pretty on books and out of our conferences will spend. Under consideration today is going to be the balance of this childcare support line, seventy five thousand dollars that. It's gonna be an agenda item. Some additional funding and we'll have to figure out where that's going to land. And then the piece on the agenda today is the Merrick Court Vista initial match. So that's a huge new Vista. County just approved that MOU. So we just want to be aware of the statutory requirement of this board to kind of recommend. In here, create the kind of net balance of kind of unallocated, unplanned to be allocated money here. So fifty seven thousand, the workforce housing support. Nitted out as your childcare support, sixteen thousand ish dollars that came from the summit that can go to other places. And then the balance of what we applied for in the Merrick Court Vista was intended to go towards rent and offset through that staff person. I think one thing that Chris brought up to me is that potentially the payments under the, the grand, I assume just. Correct. Uh. Under the.
Sorry.
Shouldn't they give them time for technical difficulties today? Yeah.
Boy, fuck it. And the paying system for the budget gets there. You'll have to get.
Speeding up.
Cyber. How they're planning to get cyber?
They might already have. All right. Um, there's this discussion that maybe these, these payments for Vista and for Summit could just come out of the balance of our diversification spend and leave more money out of the Royal County Grant pot for other direct community support projects.
Excuse me, can you say that again?
So in conversations with, with Chris, the next piece I want to speak to is that the possibility of instead of spending, you know, this balance of our cost for the summit on out of this account, pay it out of the remaining diversification funds. And the same could be for the Merrick Court Vista payment, which would then free up an additional fifty thousand dollars within the context of the Royal County Grant or more direct support programs. But that's kind of a question that's, that's in flux. So we don't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this as resources. We discussed the, the line items throughout the rest of the agenda. If there's any questions, I just wanted to make sure that board members had some context here. The last thing that's under here is there we had before, you know, we got very heavily busy with recruiting and interviewing and getting new board members and with this legislative session. And we're in the middle of discussing a handful of options for that workforce housing support line. And so these are, these four options kind of came out of that. So those are just place held there for now, although it's not on the agenda item for today for discussion. So I'm going to go to the next piece here. Which is that we're working internally to calculate the total amount of revenue available from TRT that can be spent on diversification. Just basically, how much did we start with? How much have we spent so far? And how much are we forecasting to receive before the end of June? And within that context, planning on a budget amendment to ensure that those funds are going to be spent by the end of June. We've gotten feedback from the state auditor that given that that piece of code is going to be entirely repealed from state law that we would be, if we want to spend money on that use we should do it with that piece of state laws repealed.
So before July first, we have to spend the money we assume we're getting.
Yep. So so kind of just want to keep that in mind. That's not really on the agenda today, but in a way it is as we're starting to have these planning conversations. So that's just kind of a general, you know, setting a stage update from, from big, from the bird's eye view. And then as we go to the agenda, we're going to touch on them smaller bits. I might, if people have questions on us, I might just hold until we get through on kind of our agenda and then we can actually go back to that. Here. So that's, I just wanted to set the stage for the rest of the discussion today.
Okay, great. Okay, Forrest, did you want me to begin now with the grand summit overview?
Yes, after I confirm with, with, with August that we have essentially discussed AMD on the agenda, the review of the summit expenses. Was, was that sufficient to address that you're verbal about the?
You.
Don't, don't, don't worry about going back. Let's go ahead.
Okay.
Let's, let's just start with the grand summit.
Hey.
I'm sorry. I have to see if there are any presentations that was it in public company as well.
Yeah. I think we're all good.
Okay, and then we, we were distributed minutes of prior meetings, correct?
No, there, there's no minutes on this agenda.
Okay, so I wasn't the only one who missed.
No, no. I removed that from the, unfortunately, our, we were very busy.
So that's understood. That's understood. Okay, so overview of the grand summit.
Yeah, happy to. Okay. Okay, if someone could again, let me know if they can see my screen. Someone up there again. Okay, great.
Yes, I can skip.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, that internet is real fast. Okay. So I'm just, I'm gonna just do a brief recap of the grand summit and say Kyle, who is here with us from Powerhouse Events, is someone that August and I connected with at previous events that are put on at the state level, things like the Outdoor Recreation Summit and like events are what Powerhouse works on. And so this year, we really want to kind of increase the value added with the summit. And so Powerhouse worked with us and we're really happy with the results. So basically, I just wanted to just show you all, and this will all be handed out after the meeting. So don't worry if you miss anything. This is just rehashing essentially what was on the schedule for that day. We had some great morning discussions, kind of setting the stage for what the economic development atmosphere and foundation for Grand County looks like. And then throughout the day, we kind of expanded that vision to think more regionally, think about energy trends nationally and other events that we had going on. We also had ample networking. We had some stretching and we had some really cool prizes that were donated to the summit, which hopefully kept people on their seats still for five. We had some really exciting sponsors this year. Thanks in no small part to Sarah and her team. We really were able to up our sponsor game and this year sponsorships were more flexible. A lot of folks donated different services or prizes, whether it was something we gave away at the end of the day or the flowers that were decorating the stage and at the pre-event reception. So we had a lot of community partners with this and it was just, it was, last year was, was a great start for us, but this year I think we double or tripled our just number of sponsors. So it was great to work with more partners. Let's see. And then this is just showing some of the speakers that we had, well, all the speakers that we had. Rob and Megan were just some, just a few of the speakers that we had. Elisa unfortunately was sick, but she was there with us in spirit. I love Cory's photo of him wrangling cattle. And, and again, just, you know, the level of professionalism with all the materials that we got this year out of Powerhouse was great. You know, this is what the program of the day looked like and just very professional, very, very swanky. So really thankful that we had their partnership on. Just some quick highlights. So just like last year, we had just under a hundred and sixty attendees, which is what the hoodoo says is their, you know, their safe number. In the future, we might be able to fit a few more folks in there with just playing with the room, but still a hundred fifty to a hundred sixty feels like a really good audience when you're in there. Our ticket revenue this year was more than double what it was in twenty twenty two. That's in no small part because we did raise prices this year, but also we had a pre-event reception and we had some speakers that we wouldn't have been able to get last year. So we really think that that raise in price corresponded with, again, the value added that we tried to bring to this year's summit. And with that said, you know, we brought in a lot more sponsorship dollars as well, which you'll see on the next slide, but sponsorship dollars before the Royal County Grant funds that August was just discussing, reached just over twenty thousand dollars. I'm just going to check the chat here. Oh, Brad said he enjoyed the summit. Thank you very much. I'll add that testimonial later. We do have a really cool event website. I'm not going to click out of it because it's a mess, but it exists. Grand Summit. Moab, I think. Oh, maybe it's the, anyways, you can see it later. It's great. Grandsummoab.com. Thank you. As I said, we had a pre-event reception. The Red Earth venue was where we had it. Moab Brewery, among other vendors were there and it was just a great way to just start soft networking, getting to know the folks. And if you're coming in from out of town or if you're a local, you know, I could bring your family or something or bring out plus one. And so it was great to just see everyone before we got into like the business of it all. We had twenty seven speakers. Our postcards this year were something new that we did. So last year, we had some we had some great tables. We really wanted to make sure that we got our folks this year who are attending to go to those tables to learn about the sponsors and the resources on hand. So we had these awesome postcards that I'll show you in a second, where if you got X amount of stamps, then you were entered for a prize in our drawing later in the day and the tables stationed around the resource area will give you the stamps. So we got a lot of good feedback. That was a great way to engage the tables, get people to, you know, during their networking breaks, not just talk with their friends around tables, but like really go out and check out the resources and the sponsors that were on hand. And then we had some really cool giveaways. So let's see. Oh, we got some testimonials here. I'll pass that around later so you can read this. Most of this is pulled from our feedback survey. And of course, we do have some constructive feedback as well. But this is the super positive stuff that I like to read before that. So this right here is that passport that we were talking about. So you basically, you put your name there and your email there. That way, you know, if you left the summit, then, you know, we can mail you your prize, but everyone stayed. So there was no need to email them. And then this is just an example of some ad copy that you may have seen in papers around town or online, trying to get folks engaged, scan the QR code to learn more. And some of our top sponsors were featured on the bottom of those ads. So these are how prices, or rather, our financials broke down year over year. So this year, we had a big increase in sponsorship dollars as well as ticket sales that I talked about. The ticket sales, again, we had about the same number of ticket sales, but the price was much higher. The sponsorship dollars, you know, serious kudos to Sarah and her team for really going out and getting sponsors, not just within our region, but bringing some folks just from within the Four Corners region to help strengthen some really cool conversations. So huge value added, big jump in our sponsorship this year, which gave us, you know, a big jump in revenue as well. When we look at expenses, we spent, you know, just under what we spent last year to put on the event. Sarah's team does come with a price and I think it's totally worth it. And so with that added in, the net cost of the grand summit comes out to just over eight thousand dollars here. Looking last year, that's still an improvement from our net cost from last year. And so that's, those are the main takeaways. Another, another thing I want to plug is that I didn't really have a lot of photos. If you were there, you were there, but it was super exclusive. So if you weren't there, you missed out. We, some people took some photos from, with their phones, but this year, since we had so much going on with legislation, there were just small things that were overlooked in event prep and photography was one of them. And so next year, we're excited to get a photographer to memorialize the event. But as you can see here, the room was beautiful. Here's a picture of one of our presentations on responsible recreation. And this is the view outside of the Red Earth venue right before the reception. Chat, chat real quick. See.
Oh, impact on staff. Maybe less than two thousand, I'm not sure. I mean, I would say that last year, Ben's full-time job was the, was the event for about two months. So we can calculate that, but that's pretty much a percent sum.
Yeah.
And, you know, Ben was able to be an actual staff person for our office for the most three, three months of time. So from a, from a pure anecdotal how it felt in the office perspective, the fact that the net cost was actually less on that. I'm saying that twice. I mean, it's a, it's a no brainer for me.
Yeah. So again, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm going to pass these slides around afterwards. And if folks have more detailed questions, they're welcome to ask afterwards or while we have Sarah here. If you have any event questions, either of us are happy to field them and just talk about the summit.
Do, ma'am?
Yeah, please.
So out of the hundred and fifty three attendees and the twenty seven guest speakers for that number, so is it really a hundred and twenty five? Or did you count those speakers as the?
It's a good question. It's a, it's a math problem that I haven't done, but I'd love to do after this. Some guest speakers only stay, were only there for their session and then they left. And Sarah and I, mostly Sarah, sorry, you could probably speak to this better than I, but I know that Sarah and I were trying to figure out with guest speakers, you're going to stay the whole day? You're just going to stay for your session? So Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but we accounted for that for the most part. So if a speaker was going to be there the whole day, they're part of that number. And if they're just there for a bit, they weren't.
Yeah, so we, we account for the speakers in our registration numbers. Traditionally, you know, especially in a low, in a location like Moab, they tend to stay the entire day. And that registration is our number for name badges, meals, accounting for all of the expenses that come along with the event. So yeah, they are counted in that one fifty three, but I would say the majority of them stayed. I know even people coming from Salt Lake City stayed and were there the evening before. So they earned it.
Which is great. I know of one speaker who came in just for a session, rolled up after lunch, he was done, he left. But yeah, it sounds like for the most part, people did stay. So I guess those twenty seven speakers is for the majority part of that one fifty.
They didn't have to pay. Did they? They didn't have to pay, did they, to be, I mean, did we? 125 tickets or 122 tickets?
That's, yeah, Sarah, do you have the number of, if we remove the tickets that were comped for speaker sponsors, what was sold?
So the sold number is our ticket revenue. So we'd have to break that down. I don't have it in front of me. We'd have to break that down by numbers. But yes, speakers are comped so that we take into, you know, account their schedules and travel time and their expertise and adding to the event. So we usually comp all speaker tickets.
Yeah, so I can do some quick math after this and figure out what that like really looks like.
I mean, I figured speakers were comped.
Yes, yes.
Curious what then, what we ended up ticket.
Yeah, and some sponsors also got, if you sponsor at a certain level, you could get a few seats. What was the ticket, the ticket price? Yeah, we had a, we had tiered ticket prices. Sarah, do you remember the tiers that we did? Do we start at 65 or 70?
Let me just get in there for you.
I think maybe a better use of our time would be just maybe adding a little bit of a ticket breakdown and just mail that out to y'all.
Sure, you can do that.
Yeah, so good question. I'm happy to send that information out to us.
Thanks.
Yeah, of course. Any other questions?
Are you ready to take on the next item, the next bullet, which is a grand summit planning and coordination committee?
Yeah, do you want me to speak instead or do you want to speak? I can speak first. Sure. In brief, I think that last year, we kind of very unilaterally did this summit and we got an interest from at least the chamber to be involved and, you know, and they were involved in, at a, at a higher level in that we consulted them and made sure that we had their input. But I think the intention here is that we want to make, you know, a subcommittee of this board. To have like one person kind of be just a little bit more in touch. And I'd use that as a place for the chamber and other, other stakeholders to be involved in the future planning of this. And then that'll, by the creation of that, hold us accountable to making sure that we have a timeline and that's, it's relaxed enough that it's not a last minute push. So yeah, I think that the thought there was if we want to create that as a subcommittee of this board, if anybody wanted to express interest. And so I don't know if, I'm, I'm not the chair anymore. So I'm, I'm not gonna say anything about motions then.
Given, what's the time that you would have for having that group?
Well, I think we want to start in the summer.
This summer. So we can pick this up at a, at a meeting in May perhaps? And by then, you may have a clearer idea of how you think it might be organized.
Sure.
Good, okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Let's move on to the next item, which is a recommendation to the county commission to make an award to the Moab Community Childcare Center. And everybody's received the proposal that Rob has submitted, I hope. And so I would turn that over to you, Rob, to talk about the proposal. You've given us some great detail about accomplishments and number of, you've seen number of communities, number of organizations you've already helped.
Right, thanks. Yeah, I, I'm gonna try to keep words, because yeah, I mean, this board really set the whole trajectory of this organization when they gave us $100,000 last July and really challenged us or made me feel challenged to, okay, this is a problem, how can we spend this money effectively and work on it? Which was not immediately obvious initially. We just had the infant care center and, you know, there's only so much that you want to invest in that. And then we had to think about a new center and so forth. So yeah, we developed Helping Hands with it. And anyways, really appreciative of the board's support of us. And hope we continue to earn it, future support. So yeah, frankly, you know, we've been growing so fast that having some funding right now would be really helpful for us to not have to slow down our growth. I mean, we're obviously trying to stage our growth so we don't staff. We're growing pretty quick. We have 11 employees now. That's gonna go up. But, and I have in the back last page, you can see kind of Helping Hands demand has increased since we started. And it's gonna increase dramatically more from there, very near term, depending on as we hire more staff. We just, we're in discussions with Grand Preschool right now. They're having trouble staffing. They're, they go down from four to two days. There's still a part-time program. We don't have a full-time preschool in town. So yeah, we're hoping to 32 hours a week. And then we'll negotiate a price with them that's kind of comparable to what they were offering the job for. And then we will ultimately pay our workers a few dollars more an hour because they are not able to attract workers on their own. And then we have one provider who can potentially increase from eight to 16 spots. But to do that, you have to hire a person and take the risk on while you grow into those spots. So you know, that might be a $10,000 investment on our end, but we think it's really good use of money to increase the number of spots permanently in town. Because a provider wouldn't really be apt to do that on their own. Otherwise, it'd be a big financial risk that they would have to have savings to, to handle. So yeah, if you look at our, like the hours in the back last page, you'll see, this is February, I didn't put it in March, but it's tracking well above that. And close to around 400 hours. And I think that we can get probably towards 800 hours. Why not, I mean, perhaps as early as, I mean, a few months away, perhaps. So that's pretty cool. So but as a result, we obviously could use some more certainty over funding. We are looking for other funding sources to have more sustainable, more diversified funding streams. In the future, we hired a grant director, Matt, Grant, a writer, Maddie Fisk, who a lot of you probably know, who was executive director of CK then for a number of years. And she works for a company in Salt Lake that does remote, kind of work for different organizations for grant writing. She works with some people in Moab. The cool thing is that actually, we were able to get her because she had more time available because she just had a baby that is now in our childcare center. So that's kind of cool. Yeah, so you know, and then in addition, you started identified some TANF opportunities, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with TANF, is it's a $10 billion, $10 million pot of money in the, in the state of Utah, which is federal appropriated money. And that'll be for three-year contracts. So we're gonna be applying for some through that, which we think that's pretty well suited for because the goal is to, their goal of that money is just kind of similar. It's, you know, you know, increasing protective factors, reducing risk factors for children's development. So yeah, I, I don't know how much I should talk with this, to this proposal. I can talk for a few more minutes and if people haven't, if you read it, I could kind of hit some items or we can just go straight into like Q and A right now.
I really enjoyed reading the presentation.
Thanks. Thanks. Yeah, I've Yeah, I've been doing a lot of research on the issue and I feel pretty, like I, like I understand it. And there's, there's only a few elements and maybe I'll just like kind of, at the risk of being an extra minute or two, I think one of the most important ones for everyone here is mostly has some of an economic background. And, you know, I have an economic background as well. I was on this board. And so I find it really interesting and it's, it's a unique situation where market almost works on its own. So it's not a situation like we're not an nonprofit, like, you know, say CK then where there's no program revenues from, people don't pay for the service, for instance, you know? No one assumes that they would. It's 100% grant-funded business. It's more, whereas in our case, you know, we, people pay us, you know, for our, for our services, providers, basically based for our support. But it doesn't quite work on its own, which is interesting. And we could try to make it work on its own, but we would sort of undermine our mission because we would end up having to charge more for our service, which would price out a lot of people. And that's kind of what happens nationally. The largest providers of care, the two, they're publicly traded companies, Bright Horizon and Kid Care. Their average for an infant is about $2,200 a month. That's like nationally. So a city is gonna be like $3,000 or $4,000 a month. So you can do some math on that quickly. These are, this is a service for, you know, people that are very, very well off and making, you know, over six, well over six figures. So but then what you have is you have this like difference, difficult situation where you have extra demand for the service. A normal market would adapt to, to provide a lower quality, lower priced alternative. But in the case of watching kids, you know, kind of like I make the point, like it's like sushi that no one wants, like the gas station sushi on discount, because it makes you nervous that you're gonna get hurt. And so the state regulates all that. So there's this like chronic shortage. And I think the solution that, you know, we're kind of stumbling on, in some ways, it's elegant, in other ways, it's clunky. It's, we're kind of intervening on both sides. We're saying like, you know, we need to pay more than the market is gonna pay for these jobs and we need to charge a little less than, than our costs. And so the way I see our organization is, is trying to be as efficient as we can with the, the, the funding that we get. So we only need something like 10 or 20% of our overall budget to be filled with grant dollars. You know, and then the rest is gonna be, people are paying us for the service we're providing. Sorry. No, it's okay. I think Jasmine has a question for you on what you're saying. Yeah.
Um, I do, the, the only question I had, I was looking at everything that you sent and that was in our packet. Out of the 100,000 that was already granted, there was a section that said how much of it was spent? So is that not yet all spent?
Correct. Yeah, yes, we have spent, I think it's there right below there, 53,000, if you scroll down a little bit. That's how much we've spent so far of the $100,000. That doesn't include March. I'm sure March totals is going to be at least another $5,000. Of that, our payroll is like running, I mean, we have other sources of funding, but our payroll's $25,000 a month. We have 11 employees. So, and like I said, I want to, we have demand for our services to increase that and it's pretty scalable. We hire a person, we get them trained, they then work in that center. And, you know, we have an app that tracks everybody is, we have a person who, you know, who's managing it. So we can dramatically increase those hours without, kind of like, without any extra administrative burden, really. But yeah, having some line of sight to more money would be great for us.
And so that's the additional 75,000 will get you through to, to like when?
Yeah, so it's, I'd say it's certainly over 12 months. But we are applying for other grants as well. You know, the TANF, we think we might get $60,000 from that. But that's for three years, which we would use to then sort of support our administrative costs of the grant, which would be like, you know, 15,000, maybe 10 to 15,000 for, you know, the person who's in charge of like making all this work. Our Director of Outreach, Taylor Rutherford's position. So the, the other part of the grant is for a new program for employer-supported childcare. And, you know, depending on what the, the board wants and things like that. The last grant, we kind of left it somewhat open-ended in terms of how the money would be allocated between different program ideas because, you know, we're not sure how quickly some of the things will go. Helping Hands has gone a lot faster than we thought and more demanding than we thought. We didn't think this was an, was the idea. When we started, it was just a few hours a week for providers. And then we kind of stumbled on that, you know, it made sense for us to sort of employ childcare workers and to sort of, you know, to ensure that they would stay in the industry and help grow the industry. If the employer-supported childcare part grows faster and we get other funding, we could move some of the money around. We could talk with the board and report on that. So it's just to give us right now, yeah, I think if we did not get this money right now, it would force us to be a little nervous to expand and to be able to handle the extra demand. And we might have to then look at the co-pays that we charge providers, where we pay $15, we charge them $15 an hour right now for the services we provide and we, our total all in cost might be $25 an hour. So, you know, yeah, I don't know, does that answer your question? This gives us a lot of runway for sure. But my, my plan with this nonprofit, and I mean, it's, it's been like really surprising and positively surprising to me how it's all going in that the, the sort of theme here is like, let's use our money as fast and as efficiently as we can on our mission and we'll get more of it if we show what we're doing. So I mean, we could right now just do nothing, not raise money and just run an infant care center. We're fully booked, we've got 18 kids on our waitlist for 12 spots. So, but we're thinking, okay, what more can we do?
Rob, we've got questions from Chris and Karen. So let's start with Karen.
Okay, I'm gonna give shorter answers this time.
Okay, I just was curious about your employee retention. It shows that you haven't asked anybody, which is super exciting. Do you guarantee a certain amount of hours for your employees? How does that, is it, are they on like contract? I mean, how is that, how is this working?
Sure, yeah. It's, so we have, one of our great hires early on was Taylor Rutherford. She is our Director of Outreach. I have put her in charge of our, our personnel. She decides when we need to hire someone. She runs all that process. And she's really good with people. And her main job is to, we have, you know, on one side, we have eight providers, including our infant care center, you know, that have needs for staffing. And then we have 11 employees who have needs for, you know, wanting to get, to get paid and have work. And so she balances both of those situations. And yeah, there's no rule to it. There are a lot of, there are a lot of consistency where people have a schedule. But as you can imagine, all of our employees are mothers, all of them, like, you know, there are some right now that are, that are, you know, that are, you know, on maternity leave. So the needs change and we've had a lot of growth in our demands. So we've had to hire new people. So when I first started, it was, when we didn't have, I felt like we didn't have a lot of work initially when we first started. And we had to hire people, that chicken and egg of making sure you didn't have people that were unsatisfied with their hours. But that has not been a problem for us. Most of our workers, on average, you know, their spouse, spouse works. And they work about 20 hours a week on average, I'd say. And some are, go up or go down from there. And that's one of the benefits that we can provide versus if we were just one center. So we can hire someone that's a caregiver and we can say, if you want more hours, like we have, you know, all these locations that can potentially have more demand.
And then the new center at the, all of USU campus, that has not been created yet, correct?
Correct.
And so that, when you, if the business end of the, the share program works, is, are they, are they gonna be doing childcare at that center? I, I was, I guess I was under, I didn't quite understand where.
So I can talk a little bit about, so, so this is our rural county part, the, the rural communities grant. The, the, that, that this board wrote a recommendation letter for a while ago, you know, was granted. We got $300,000 of the city of Moab got that money to support a childcare center. And the proposal was for a center at the former USU campus with Moab Free Health Clinic donating some land. We are still in discussions on specifically how that will be like enacted. We are looking at renovating and look, right now, we just today submitted a grant for $600,000 to renovate that south building they have at the campus for a large childcare center. And then $300,000 would go together with that. Would be, if we can get that, we're gonna hear back in a few weeks. And if not, we'll move forward with a manufactured house, either at that site or we might actually, if we can, I think it makes more sense for us to put that manufactured building next to our Lutheran Church Center, because we have a quarter acre of dirt there. And we can co-locate a center, which then means a parent who has kids of multiple ages can have infants and kind of preschool in one area. So yeah, I am kind of, I'm definitely busy with stuff and it's a big thing that we're working on right now. And we hope that we're gonna have a nice press release out of our decision of what, what's going on probably a month from now.
Awesome. Karen, there.
Yeah, that's it.
Chris?
A very quick question and then a comment. And it might be a question for August or someone else here, but we, this money needs to be spent by the end of June. The, that means allocated to our organization.
Yeah.
So paper county spending into the future.
Correct, yeah, there's no, the only, the only part of these kind of state-funded rural county grant programs that have a stipulation relevant to the actual final end-use spend is the competitive award. So what we, we were awarded for Orioh Crossing projects, because that hadn't been spent yet, was why we were, why the city basically had to apply to this program with a childcare center. Yeah, we were basically, they were like, well, you've spent your money, yeah, so you can't apply. So we are anticipating that that piece from two years ago will be spent from end-users that we can reapply to the competitive piece this fall. But the, the traditional like guaranteed 200,000 part A, they, the state just cares that we've spent it, we've allocated it. Yeah. And they consider, okay, we, you know, that is, that is meeting your priorities, it's meeting your obligation. They don't, they don't require. Um, they don't, they don't require us to do like an end use report.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I would just say that, Rob, what you've done with this, I mean, I think it's nothing short of incredible. But then it's, it's just remarkable in a short time period that you've been at this problem, how much progress has been made. It's exactly the kind of thing that I think we should be supporting. I mean, I think that our job is to get new and effective initiatives off the ground. That wouldn't otherwise be happening. And so. If we can support you and having more impact faster than you're already doing, I I think it's exactly what we should be doing in the. Long term, I mean, I hope that our funding can help you find other sources of funding. That leads to long term sustainability, right? And I mean, so I think that that process of having somebody else on staff to help you grant funding. Apply for other grants and things like that is, is a really useful piece of this puzzle. Um, so yeah, I just. Very much support what you're, what you're looking to do here.
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, I think everybody probably knows, but I I've been sort of the unofficial executive director of this um nonprofit and. And I'm an unpaid volunteer. So um, and and we have had a lot of success, but there are certainly days where I feel. Uh, either inadequate or like, you know, I mean, I I I think, I don't know what my hours are. I work a lot randomly, random times. I I'm very focused on this. I'm not on any other boards right now. I don't want to be in any other boards because I come up with good ideas when I just focus on this. Um, but yeah, um, the last few weeks with this uh new center going on. Uh, you know, the fact that, you know, our funding is, you know, not a hundred percent right now and then in terms of this grant. And then our payroll and things like that. It's like, okay, we're just gonna keep, keep building. We've got two great directors. Um, and then, yeah, but hiring um the part-time grant writer and then one of our employees turns out to um. Be a part-time bookkeeper as well for other companies in town. So we're having her do that. So I'm I'm kind of hoping maybe she can evolve into like a VP of Finance type position. So we can kind of like divide this up so I can kind of, um, yeah, just find the right balance for me. So I'm I'm not, as you can imagine, there's a lot of uh. A lot of little, little paperwork and stuff. We have a great staff, we have eleven people, so it's definitely not like all need, but yeah.
Um, looks like Kelly has a question or a comment?
Yeah, I I just think it bears um mentioning that not, not only have they done amazing work, but. And and opened up a lot of slots for childcare, which is much needed in the community. They're also supporting. Several small independent businesses, probably most of which are owned by women. And those are, those are both things that have been missions of this board for since the beginning. So I think, I think that's, that bears. Being said, I think they've probably helped keep several of those businesses in existence, which is critical for our community. So. Just wanted to make sure that was noted.
Thank you.
That's great, great point.
Yeah, we we definitely like a lot of those workers, we, a lot of our eleven staff, we were not working before. We hired them, they were, they were stay at home moms.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is a great example of entrepreneurship in the social sector. It's a great example and to your point. The um degree to which you're capturing the data and the return on investment. Is is one thing that'll appeal to funders. What appeals in this community, I think, is the return on relationships that are created among and between the childcare providers. And their clients or beneficiaries. Um, so I think that's another benefit that this program is bringing, bringing. So Mary, did you want to say something? Are we gonna add something?
I was just saying, it it's created like a team. Rather than, you know, it's a team of people, maybe different businesses. And organizations that they become, it to me, it appears to start to become a team, that they all have the same mission and the goal. And they support each other in meeting that goal. It's. I remember six years ago, we started talking about getting daycare here and it just. And all of a sudden after you became involved and the diversification money was able to be given. I think that was the big thing, you know, you being there at the right time and the money. Made it possible that people, something people have been working on for six years came to fruition much better than we expected. So.
And.
Money well spent.
Well, I I just wanted to say, you know, I think this is such a a smart direction that that Moab needs to take note of. Of that, you know, rather than having it be every man out for themselves, every childcare center out for themselves. Like having some umbrellas, but we're supporting the, you know, same types of businesses. I'm I'm excited to see where he can go from here because. You know, I think he's got the right idea. He's gotta have uh more sustainability of funding and. Uh, I think this is where Moab needs to go as a, as a whole. So I'm pretty excited to see what what happens next year.
Let's uh entertain a motion to send some money to the Moab. Community childcare. Is there a motion to? Allocate or to recommend to the commission this funding?
I would move to make a motion to allocate seventy five thousand dollars.
Can I ask one more question before we go there? Um, so I know a lot of people that have, yeah, can you guys hear me? Okay?
Hold on just one second.
Yeah, let's, let's first.
Can you guys? Okay, go ahead.
And then we can dive in.
I I second the motion.
Okay. Then you can dive in if we all agree that we're ready to go.
I just had a quick question about it. Um. I was wondering like with the the waitlist that we know that's going on with kids, like is it first come, first served? Is it differentiated by age groups? I was just wondering how that that kind of came into play.
Yeah, so uh, we are waitlist that I mentioned, we have eighteen kids. Some of those kids though are, have not been born yet. They they're got on our waitlist for our our infant care center. Um, yeah, I mean, we have, we only have, we have twelve.
That's a real thing. I mean, it's a really big issue.
Yeah, we have, we have twelve full-time spots and so um some of those are, we offer part-time. So I think, I don't know, we have maybe sixteen or seventeen. Families, a lot of them use this half the time. Um. We don't currently, one one thing I want to do is to be more of a clearinghouse for all the the childcare providers and like a waitlist. We sort of do that informally right now. When someone calls us, we only serve kids up to the age of three. And if someone is over two, we put, we 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 have, we push them to the other providers and we just focus on infants and now we're full. So everybody that reaches out to us. We we work with the other providers so we know where there's open spots in town. Um, so we're doing that. Um. We can do a better job of like having that, you know, on on our website of where all the people's phone numbers are and things like that. But we're, we're handling the the incoming people that we get and it seems like. Lately, it's, it's definitely increased more because I think as people know that the service is there and the product is there. And we heard from the past that some people just won't even look for childcare because they just heard anecdotally it's not available. So they just, you know. Um, so the biggest need is certainly among infants because, you know, they're, um, it's really costly to provide for them because the ratios are so hard. Uh, but you know, we don't have a full-time preschool in town and, you know, we have so many, you know, however you you slice it, there's. There could be, you know, probably two hundred more or more, you know, spots of childcare. So. Um, whatever we can get is gonna be, is gonna be filled pretty quick. Um. Yeah, I I did, does that answer your? Question there, I mean.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious the process.
And and the other thing I'll just add, like, I mean, well, I don't know, I. I can't help myself. I mean, I I one thing I probably did not make a point of in this report as much. But just so you know where we're going with this, this is how the two proposals tie together because we have this employer supported. Is uh availability and affordability and both of those in are, so one, you obviously need availability to begin with. But if we had tomorrow a hundred spots for childcare in this town or full-time childcare spots. That would, we probably fill them eventually. Um, but you know. For a lot of people will struggle to pay that, that will not qualify for the federal subsidies. So that's why we need to do the other affordability programs. To find, you know, a lot of people have money to pay for it, but they don't have a thousand dollars a month per child to pay for it. And again, that's like below what our cost is with no rent. So um, yeah, we're working on both of those things and as we have more affordability options. That will create demand for childcare. We're gonna go to employers and say, you know, do you have people that are working part-time that could work full-time? So.
I've failed to keep us within our targeted time.
Yes, sorry, I might have halted.
Uh, you were asked questions and you answered them. So I would, we have a motion on the table to recommend to the county commission funding of this grant. And I would ask those in favor to say or indicate I.
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 Three, four, five.
I. I, oh, sorry, I'm not voting. Sorry.
Uh, every voting, everyone who voted, but we certainly have a majority. So I think we should take the.
Oh, there's Mary is here. Okay.
Yeah, and she's locked up.
It might be useful to ask for dissenting votes just to ensure.
Yes, of course. Is there anyone who dares dissent from your request? Hearing none, we will make the recommendation. And Rob, thank you so.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Yeah, I will look forward to continue reports to you and, you know, reach out to me when you have any questions you want to talk about it. Um, or if you have any good ideas. I mean, we're still, we're coming up with trying to do new things to try to look on the issue. These programs are part of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good work. Next agenda item is revision of the rural county grant uh proposed expenditures for twenty twenty-three. Is that you, August?
Yeah. Uh, sure. So we kind of already went over this on. The, the, basically, this is now real, I'll update this by saying this is spent. Or or recommended, I should say. Um, now that that's happened, but I think the the only other thing I would maybe have us discuss here. And maybe this is the opportunity to ask questions about where this all lands and thoughts for the future is on. I don't, I don't think we necessarily need a motion on it, but on. You know, we, the the county has approved the M U for the Vista that was applied for, it's in there on. I I don't think we need like a formal vote to say, yes, let's pay this amount, but just wanted to flag that, make sure that. Um, that's uh kind of fully aware of the board that we're in order that unless there's, there is discussion or concern. Um, and then I think separately, just being aware of kind of what is available and and going forward. Maybe thinking about on future agenda items for the end of this meeting um. About what components of this we want to flush out, what do we want to CD? But I I think it's a good opportunity to have a quick discussion on on these numbers, make sure everybody goes up to speed and. And um, open there.
There is more, wasn't there? Like.
Yeah, so the only ones that aren't under here are the handful of workhorse housing support programs that are under consideration. Kind of for the future, um, but aren't on the agenda today. So, yeah, any, any questions? I'm kind of aware, rural county grant for this year of money we have that we need spent by June. Sits. So it's we.
Sorry, no, go ahead.
If the seventy-five goes to childcare as we just recommended. Um, the forty-five goes to Vista out of this or TRT. I don't know which way you wanted to do that. Where, how much is that? What's left? So what, I can, I can just do scenario here. What, what are you proposing for which categories here? Um, nothing what's left, basically. If I feel that that needs to be spent between now and June, supposing that the seventy-five gets approved by the commission. Okay, a supposing seventy-five gets approved and maybe, maybe let's do two scenarios. Supposing that all of the Vista and all of the granting gets paid out of TRT. And I'll, I zero these out, which would would leave a hundred and seven thousand total to be allocated on right now. Now that would be out of the seventy-five for workforce housing, fifty-seven on total unallocated and then an additional fifty. That could go towards more housing, more childcare work or an additional priority um that we. For after, I think, the next conversation is kind of about planning, but if there's something that comes up, that would be an urgent funding need. Um, you know, I think that probably the best way to go if we have unallocated funds or unprioritized or strategic category funds. Would be um, once we have a good vision of how much we have to spend from the diversification side. What the needs are and, you know, how much money we have total, figuring out on balance, you know. What, maybe there's something that's really important that is not seeing funding um at that point. Um. Yeah, so that's kind of my first, first response there. And then you have the alternative, a different scenario where we fully pay this out on. Would be something like. Pay that for for the grand sum and we fully pay this full amount on. To the Vista, timing's gonna be funky there. So I'm not sure how that's gonna exactly work, but it would, it would, it would be more like seventy-five thousand. In terms of unallocated. Thanks.
Yeah.
So what you're asking for are suggestions about the reallocation?
I think I.
How would you state that request?
Yeah, I think I'm actually more, I wanted to just get, make sure there was visibility and clarity as to. How much is unspoken for at this time? And then I think during the. Uh, future agenda items section of the meeting, um. If board members want to throw out, hey, let's, let's dive into the agenda, the housing piece of the next meeting, for example, or. Um, but I think that's a really good starting point. We already have a couple of projects that have been scoped. Um, that kind of have been on pause. So that's something I would think that we consider at a next or relatively near future meeting. Um, and I think that there's a certain amount of um opacity around. These two numbers as it pertains to the larger picture of how much diversification TRT money is there going to be able to be spent. Um, so I think starting with. With the housing projects and at least identifying, okay, getting, getting dollar amounts attached to these projects and. Um, doing initial, how much do we want to fund for anyone or a number of them? Um, and then hopefully on our end we'll work to get a bigger picture of the entire. Um, kind of a resource, resources that we have available. Um, we're working with Chris and and then also there will be a process with the commission and and the child council board, but um. So I would, I would say, I'm not, I'm not looking for, I don't really have a request. I think this is probably getting us all on the same page and then. Um, my, I guess, recommendation and I've expressed this to you as board chair. Would be that, you know, we consider the workforce housing support programs as soon as possible. This is convenient, basically. And then if other, of other board members want to kind of put discussion or action items relevant. The remaining funds, that we consider that as well.
Great. Any questions? Comments, concerns?
Can't tell if she has a new question. Shaylee, is your hand up from a previous question or? Is that?
Previous, previous question, previous question, sorry.
Cool. Well, I'm good to the important of all the questions.
Okay, so are we now on the free clinic? The Vista for the free clinic?
Let's see. I think that um my, my thought there was, I don't think we need an affirmative. Vote or motion to to recommend that spend because the commission is already prudent. Um. But mainly wanted to make sure that that was a part of this meeting. So that the board is aware that they're probably gonna move forward with that and create space if there is kind of dissenting thoughts on that, right? We shouldn't, or if you can say those then. Okay. So if there is, then I'm not hearing that. So we're having a board of us there is.
Okay. Uh, let's move forward then. The next item is on the agenda item, meaning is discuss the post HB four sixteen planning process. And and uh. August and I talked a little bit about this. We started talking, having a conversation even before our last meeting, given the the implication or the expectation that. Diversification would fall out of the um, out of the funding for our work. Um, and everything that the commission. Has said, books about economic development and diversification can lead people down to a couple of things. And so I think that this part of the conversation, which I hope will take us, give us thirty to forty minutes or. Is really to start having a conversation about how we move forward. Um, what we think we mean when we talk about economic development. And and then start talking about how we can use what we've learned around this table and online. Um, and how we collaborate with the travel council and start thinking about. A, an economic development strategic plan. That incorporates the tourism ecosystem along with everything else we're trying to accomplish in terms of our goals or. Of improving the community's economic resilience, um, really working to support local businesses. Even those and especially those who are not source dependent. And really try to find a way to build a community conversation so that. People have a sense that they get, they're getting heard. And we have a lot of talent on this board. And it's an opportunity for us to get involved individually. and start working on specific elements of that community conversation. So that's, that's the context for where we got to here.
Sweet.
And, uh, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, how changes to the budget and, and state law and everything has happened here. Um, and, and I think last time I, I kind of pointed out my view of, you know, my optimistic silver lining view on the changes that, um, in, in a way, it's a, it's a clearing of the table and opportunity for, um, a reset and a deep pressurization of this conversation topic, um, and to kind of reestablish in, you know, well facilitated community spaces that are outside of, you know, the commission chambers or the city council to talk about, kind of really in the weeds, on what, what are we, what are we trying to do here, and, and set the stage for moving forward. Um, and I think it's really important to note that the, the goal here is to be jointly doing this process with the travel council advisory board, um, you know, having them really focus on some of the tourism silo focused question areas, um, having this board focusing on some of the more holistic and some of the economic diversification specific question areas, and, and then figuring out who exactly is going to program manage, you know, take notes and facilitate and all the rest, but that, you know, the hope, the hope is to move us forward. So I'll, I kind of try to frame this in the kind of Simon Sinek, why, how, what circle, 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 circle method to get us started. Um, so I think my framing of this starts with the fact that, um, I think everybody can agree that our community is relatively divided, um, and, and, you know, the only communication, only, you know, you talk to someone who this isn't kind of their daily life to deal with these policies or to work in either of these fields, um, the one conversation around economic development that happens is more towards or less towards, um, and various kind of emotionally charged, um, you know, arguments that come along with that. And I think that those emotionally charged arguments often shut people down, and people don't want to have space, and so they say, see ya, I'm going to go ride my bike and get to my happy place. So, um, you know, the, the follow-up here is that it's preventing us from really digging as a community into the nuanced weeds of defining a more holistic vision for the future that comprises, um, excuse me, comp, that has some compromise in it, and it also kind of aligns on common sense solution that we can really rally behind. And the thinking there is that if we can find alignment on even a handful of priorities that collectively we can push forward on those project for two resources and make politically durable programs that, you know, we don't have , uh, rug pulling crap come under us like what just happened, um. And so, sorry, my slides are clearly not how I want them to be set up, um. So that's kind of the big why, and I, and I should say with the grain of salt, this is generally my view and my framing and by, by osmosis of the last two years of these kind of trying to do this stuff, um, and so this is all up for discussion in terms of like getting a different perspective, but this is just my setting of the stage. So I think I have four kind of guiding questions around the how, um, which is, you know, how do we create a holistic vision instead of priorities and develop programs that drive economic opportunities to support all of our local businesses, workforce, and residents, you know, kind of really touching on the fact that, you know, whether you are, uh, you know, a guide of, uh, climbing guide, or you work at the hospital as a nurse, all, all of the, there's a certain amount of, of, of the rising tide lifting all boats at some level, right? Um, and that certain programs are not going to be differentiated between tourism, not tourism. There are going to be certain things, like I think childcare is a really good example, uh, that's going to support mothers and families regardless of what industry they work in, and allow for increased revenue to that family, um. A more targeted question is how do we manage to sustain thriving towards the ecosystem that drives economic benefits to our local community while managing the real environmental and quantity, community quality of life impacts that come with that, and trying to have that conversation and in, in a facilitated, empathetic, um, compassionate environment. Um, how do we diversify our economy so that it provides more year-round, full-time benefit of job opportunities that are uh, untethered from the visitation curve? So I've been trying to come up with language to describe that, and every day it's different. Basically, you know, it's not, it's not correlated to, okay, it's spring and people are here, so I have a job because of that, um, it's a more smooth and consistent, um, personal revenue stream for the household, um. Yeah, these slides are bad. Okay, um, and then lastly, how can we work together, and I think this is actually the most important one, how can we work together as a community of individuals with different perspectives to achieve that goal in a collaborative and mutually respectful fashion, um? And, you know, I think that those touch on notions of transparency and equity and making sure that there is a good faith effort to include all of the voices in this conversation, um, because they don't think that we achieve a politically durable outcome in the absence of that. And I think also people don't show up if they're anticipating to be subjected to emotional trauma in a, in that community planning space, which I think happens all too much here. Um, and then I tried to boil those down to actual, uh, as, as Horace kind of put it, horizontals, so overarching kind of goals, actual, the actual what, um, under which there's verticals that are specifically focused on creating actual programs that create outcomes in this kind of what category. So, you know, what, we want to, you know, thinking about driving investment in economic infrastructure towards all local businesses, workforce, and residents, um, continue to manage our tourism economies that drives economic benefits to our community, um, work towards smart mitigation of the environmental and community quality of life costs associated with the growth of our tourism industry economy, and lastly, increase the amount of year-round full-time benefit jobs, kind of similar language, but those being kind of my starting point for, you know, the horizontal big goals, um, and objectives. Um, and then the intention here is to bring stakeholder from here on out, bring stakeholders together, identify gaps and propose solutions, um, and try to do that in a way that, you know, this board is, that pretty volatile. So kind of want to start, um, kind of just high level, uh, you know, there, I have a bit of an exercise that maybe we'll start with, actually, but, um, what we're going to go to is kind of go over, I have kind of put together a handful of like vertical areas that, that capture some of what we've already been doing, and I think helps to think through what my problem, that I would pose, these community dialogues start in different categories as, um, and wanting to discuss that together, make sure we're not missing anything, ultimately getting to a point where we have an idea who would want to be involved in which conversations, um, there is a need to figure out who's going to program manage this, whether that's a, uh, consultants who bring on for this project, or um, some kind of staff, obviously staff is difficult because all of a sudden our ongoing funding is gone, so, um, to have consistent staffing that is not focused exclusively kind of in the tourism realm becomes a tricky question for us. Um, and then the goal would be, you know, at the intervening travel council board, we're going to do a similar exercise focused on a lot of tourism sectors and coming up with those vertical question roundtables, so, you know, say we end up with eight or nine or something like that, having people assign to that and, and kind of figuring out, okay, now we have generally where we want to start, um, actually make that happen, create a timeline, and bring that back to the next meeting. But I think where we wanted to start for an opportunity for a bit of reflection, um, is kind of with all of this in mind, and also bringing like everybody's, I think, unique perspectives to this board, take, take five minutes, um, and, you know, write down and reflect, you know, what does economic development mean to each of us? Um, and, you know, Horace has recommended a partner exercise with a lot of people online, so we can't really do that, so if people want to partner up in here, or if they want to do their own reflection, that's up to them. There is, but we, uh, I think we don't guarantee luck, we're not going to go with that. So, so I think the easiest thing is.
I, I think given the timeframe that we have, let's just take five minutes individually.
Yeah.
And we've talked with Ben, and he's agreed to describe and take, take down the comments that people online and in the room have, um, as in the answers to these questions, um, so that we're a little bit more, more efficient for the time.
So do you want to start with the reflection still first? Or just launch right into it?
Uh, let's go with it. Let's go with it. I thought you were asking me to start reflecting.
No, 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 you do want to hold five minutes for reflection, though.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll start a timer here, um, but let's just take five minutes for everybody to take some notes on their own, uh, documents and, and reflect on these questions here.
So within five minutes we reflect, and then we're going to share what we've got to share back.
Mm-hmm. So maybe consider both of these.
So the difference between economic development to us and economic diversification.
Not necessarily the difference, but what do each of those, when you hear those words, what do those mean, um?
You know, personally, I'm, I'm looking at the clock, and I'm being respectful for everybody's time, and let's make this a ten-minute exercise with uh, just ten minutes for both of those, because people may want to do them together.
Yeah.
And then let's take the time to get people's feedback and response, and I'd especially like to give time to Jenny to to share her reaction to this possible process, because the travel council obviously is an important, um, voice in, in all of this. So ten minutes to think great thoughts.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll react, and Ben has agreed to start tallying up the responses.
That's good, clear enough. All right, so we'll come back at what time? Four thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ben, are you keeping a good timer?
Yeah. We're only two minutes in.
Hmm.
We got it.
So is it, is it effective for us to just all sit here and take notes on our own, or is the discussion more effective?
I think we're starting with, uh, just reflection on our own, and then we're going to do a share back at four thirty-seven. Thanks, Shaila.
We're six minutes in.
Oh, sorry, we're four minutes.
I'm sorry.
Six minutes left.
I, I'm misreading hand signals here, um, we're, we're four minutes in. Um, maybe the thing to do for those of you who are online is to just, um, raise a flag or a hand when you are finished, so that we have an idea, um, of when we should start moving forward. Shaila?
Okay, Shaila, Jasmine. Look like, yeah, Kelly, I've got Dennis's thoughts as well.
We had to start you working.
I've done this. For this.
How many times?
Four times.
Four times.
We do it quarterly.
We, at the, that's pretty, that's pretty big.
For the spark, for spark, for workforce development, and for. I have a few ideas before coming.
Okay, so you had a start.
A little bit.
Karen, how you doing?
Uh, okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Chris, good to go, whenever.
Good to go.
Melissa.
Good to hear. Yeah.
Okay, did we have everybody? Is everybody complete?
Let's see, um, I've got, yeah, I've got a hand raised from Shaila, I think that means she was done, um, and I've got Kelly's thoughts, I've got Elise's thoughts, I've got Dennis's thoughts, um, Jasmine, I don't know if you're going to speak, or just type something. Let's see, um. Chris can lean if he wants, but it, it seems like everyone online is either, I've got their notes, or they're going to say something.
Great, well, let's move forward. Maybe let's start with the notes that you received, Ben.
Absolutely.
And then we'll go to the folks online, and then folks around the table.
Sure, um, so should I read just verbatim what I've got from folks?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great, so, um, first. Yeah, okay, great, so first comment here I have is from Dennis and he says that economic development means well-being and quality of life for a community. Economic diversification is encouraging the positive economic growth um, then various, uh, within a variety of economic activities. Kelly said that from her perspective, economic development and economic diversification must include a component that supports the ability of local residents to find sustainable, appropriate employment that allows them to not only live outside of poverty, but attain a quality of life for themselves and their families that others in the community are afforded. Typically, this equates to wages, but that is not the only factor. Job satisfaction, work-life balance, and potential for advancement in a career are also elements. Kelly also says that she's really intrigued by Shaylee's comments about umbrellas of cooperation for individual business slash employment sector, so we'll be asking Shaylee about that. Um, and then she closed by saying, I think this could be a very good starting point to achieve what I'm mentioning. And local community childcare has created an interesting mod. Elisa, uh, P and Z director with the county said that economic development ideally means the process by which a community can either sustain a healthy balance of existing markets or can work towards achieving a healthy balance of various markets that meet the needs of the community and provide opportunities for local residents to not just make a living, but to thrive development overall, and it is a measure of a healthy economy. And then I I got one that I wasn't able to add. Jasmine wrote, economic development creating opportunity for everyone. Economic development, creating opportunity for everyone in the community to thrive in a way that is sustainable and manages our resources into the future, focusing on quality of life, diversification, building resilient community. I also have some comments here from non-board members that I I could read if.
Let's go.
I don't know the protocol there. Okay, so I've I've got from Brad, he said, at the most basic level, economic development means not exporting your kids and create an economy that has, quote, meaningful jobs for its residents so you can retain your best and brightest. He added, economic diversification is taking the peaks and valleys out of the local economy, um, moving upstream to maximize the resources you have. One important item for progress is to keep infrastructure ahead of growth. And then Jenny said, development means to be conscious about the local history and a sustainable future with as many local resources as possible. And that is everything that I have in chat right now. Oh, and Jenny added, diversification means to be inclusive with local stakeholders and visitors to our area to help ensure a healthy economy. So that's all I've got from online world. I think that Shaylee probably wanted to speak. I'm trying to think of this. I think that's the only person we haven't heard from online.
Shaylee is.
Sorry, I don't have my laptop with me, so it felt like typing was gonna be a lot. Well, you know, honestly, this is a super passionate topic for me of of what these mean to me. And honestly, when I when I become, when I visualize it, it becomes a circle with ongoing arrows of economic development to economic diversification. Um, what it means to me is they they do actually envelope each other into their definitions. One does not exist in a healthy manner without the other. Um, and I believe it is a is a formulation of ecosystems that need to have a thriving balance, I guess is the right word. Um, I think everyone, what everyone's saying is super on point of that we can't put too much focus on one or the other. Because if we if we put too much focus on either, both will fail, unfortunately. So having a good balance and umbrella. Um, the sentence that I have come to use often as of late is stop fighting to be right and fight to solve. Um, and if everyone can come to the table and be willing to compromise on on their their sis- their belief systems, because to be honest, everyone arguing with with what this means is right, because it's their own feelings, it's their own value system, it's their own beliefs, they're all right. So, uh, that that's where I I come in is that we have to fight to solve. And what that looks like for Moab is different than it is for big city governments and big city economies. And us working together like kind of what they're creating with the childcare to me is along the right lines of how do we come together and solve a problem? That's all I got.
Thank you, Shaylee. Um, run the table, who wants to start?
Dennis, right, and yeah.
Oh, I'm sure Dennis.
Yeah, I think, um, I have some couple of actually ideas, questions, or maybe opinions as well. Looks like to me every individual in this meeting, even online or on the board, right now on the table, we have some special people like Kelly Thornton. She's working for worker workforce, right? So it looks like to me she has many data insight about how many uh, workforce we have here in town. How many of them seasonally come in enjoying their time and then going out again out of Moab? So to me, I have not really exact numbers, but looks like my first, we have to approach to this situation to bring up what is mean to us and then how we can develop part is counting, analyzing, and I have really no idea is any of us or any department of the county has that data. Like, looks like maybe we have ten thousand people living roughly in this county. But we don't know how many of them really hardly working, how many of them retired, I don't know. And how many of them really partially they're working? And what are the metrics? Do we need more people in this town? But before that, of course, we know very major problem, housing, major problem, childcare, major problem, any other uh, part of the part of the chain. So what I wanna say is, like, I do believe to bring up our well-being and making quality of life for every individual here is in different categories. I do know many people, they're really in well-being, they have no concern, but they're suffering with the workforce. So it looks like to me there is no balance between of the social, economical difference in the community. So I think we need to really get to approach in the in the right questions. That's what that's what I like in these meetings, actually. While August was presenting the questions, why's and then what's, that really brought me up suddenly. I just would like to negotiate a little bit about this. To me, it looks like there is no enough workforce or enough number of employee in this town to run the businesses. So to me, we need to increase the population. That's my point. Either wrong or correct. So I don't know, does that make sense? But it looks like to me, before we are dreaming all, I don't wanna be like dreamer in these questions. I wanna be the real with the numbers, actually. Do we have any data or who can really support us with this? Or any of us has any idea, I would like to really listen.
I think we'll get to that in just a second. So really good question, Dennis. And I can address that in just a second. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Melissa, do you mind going ahead?
Sure. Um, so obviously, this is just from my perspective. But for economic development, I define it as a systemic or holistic approach to removing the barriers and creating and cultivating the opportunities to increase three things that I like to focus on, and that's regional prosperity, which I don't think is necessarily equated with growth. To me, there is definitely a difference and parity. And I think about that as parity of the region, meaning I think the quality of life for a rural town should equate to the quality of life in a city. That means different things for income. But I think that there should be parity between those two things and also parity within a community. Like, you don't want too much concentrated at the top and then, you know, a whole sector that's there to serve the rest. And also economic participation. And I don't necessarily track that to me in terms of like, what is an employment figure? That can be entrepreneurship. So how do we increase the ability for economic participation through childcare and entrepreneurship and employment? And for diversification, I kind of look at that as a two-parter, too, is one is risk mitigation, not having all of our eggs in one basket and not having to depend on solely one company or one vertical or one industry to be able to help us be economically prosperous. And then my second one would be to increase our opportunity verticals. So do we have enough marketing jobs and enough finance jobs and enough tourism jobs? So to me, that's kind of how I look at both of those.
Chris? Sure. I'll try to, I'll try to just add stuff where I have something that hasn't already been said. So for economic development, just very simply, I would say it's about improving the economic dimensions of our community members' quality of life. Um, so it's holistic, it's broad-ranging, it's it's what everyone's already talked about. For diversification, I mean, I think taking it at face value is very simple. I mean, it means we are a tourism-based economy. It means building other things or strengthening other things that go alongside that. The the one thing I'd wanna add here is, is your first maybe suggest that we consider is, given where we're at with this kind of idea of diversification, which I guess I would say I think has become a bit polarizing, that maybe it's better for us to look at that next level down of than identify like mitigation, like, why do we, why do specific reasons? And I think we could do a lot by focusing on them. So, you know, I mean, that means things like resilience in our economy, we need a resilient economy, we need a sustainable economy. We need to lessen seasonality. If we can, you know, move the conversation in those directions, I think that the answers to how to solve those problems can actually come from both tourism and non-tourism, right? And that's what we want as a community. So that's, I guess that's where I would suggest, maybe we can, we can kind of drive part of the conversation is instead of beginning with this dividing line between the tourism economy and the non-tourism economy, let's ask ourselves what problems we're trying to solve in the economy and and then put everything on the table for how we're gonna get there. Because that's actually also gonna make more sense in terms of how we fund these initiatives, right? Because if we admit that tourism and tourism promotion, things that TRT can fund can be a part of the solution that we used to call economic diversification, right? Then then we're actually bringing more resources to the table while we have that conversation also. And should be working with Jenny and other folks around town, you know, as we do this, as we undertake this process.
We're gonna get to see all these, right?
That's gonna take his best, and you can probably send him a note saying, I didn't say that. I meant to say that.
I said, economic development is developing an environment where the economy is stable and energized to become more productive and creative. Economic development is broken into two parts, in my opinion. The development and maintenance of the infrastructure for a strong economy, such as housing, daycare, training, health, and safety. The second part is providing support to already established businesses and supporting and encouraging optimism and creating an environment that encourages outside business to locate in our area. Diversification is businesses that are not all dependent on one source. In our county, it's tourism, but it was extraction. And other companies, the towns we've looked at, it's manufacturing, farming. I mean, any, any, anything that the if the environment is uh, you know, it it, uh, diversification is not having something that's dependent on what the majority is. So, that's what I think. So, economic development, mine was very similar, growing well. Community benefits, quality of life for our residents, but, um, economic diversification for me is recognizing that the most stable and prosperous businesses are those that are homegrown. Generally, these enterprises start with solving a local problem with local resources. Um, they are embedded in the community, relying on local services, accountants, lawyers, mark, uh, market chairs, et cetera, with local talent. Um, and then they put a float in a local parade, they sponsor a local softball team. They have loyalty in the community and are inclined to stay, especially that this success is part of the community's identity. And I think that's, um, sort of where we have lost some of our strength. So that was very good.
Communities are supporting your local museum as well as your local softball team?
Yeah, absolutely.
Megan?
So I think because of my job or jobs, um, I think of things a little bit differently. Um, and I measure these a little bit differently than I think that you do. So I have a little bit different look on this. Um, anyway, so so under economic development, we actually have measurements um, on this that I have to measure, um, under, uh, uh, my jobs. So obviously, to do business development or workforce development. Um, and the first one, we have six different measurements on on economic development. The first is proper business expansion, um, and looking at where the gaps are and why our businesses aren't doing not proper um, or or proper expansion. Is it space? Is it know-how? Is it capital? Is it those different things? Um, and there's several different reasons why that is in this area and how people tackle that. Um, the next is, um, uh, economic development is not just revenues increase because our businesses are making great revenues during tourist season and things like that. But it's also workforce development and succession planning. A lot of our businesses think succession planning is what we do with our businesses when we move on and we want to, we wanna retire. But it's also thinking about who's gonna take that manager role? Who's going to move into that next step? What's our our training progression plan? Um, and that's something that we're missing in a lot of our businesses and one of the reasons why we have a huge turnover. Um, and also falls into our, uh, wage increases, another one that we monitor. And that goes back into our custom fit. We're doing the same training over and over and over and over for the same businesses. Up to ninety thousand dollars last year for one training in the area. To the point where custom fits looking at cutting that training as an option to be able to train, um, or to fund um, because so much money is going into that. And the question of why we hold it, it's because, um, customer churn or employee turnover, so they have to do that training again because it's a requirement for most of our businesses to have. And then looking in, why we have so much turnover? And, uh, the cost the businesses are having to do that training, um, is huge. Or to do training in general and training, for example, let's say guides, for example, training guides to do it every year over and over and over again to a huge sum of money. Uh, and then the next is, um, making our our businesses, even our tourism businesses, we're year-round development. Our year-round jobs, uh, which is our, and the number of startups we have, and then capital infusion. I am surprised at the number of businesses in our county that actually miss out on capital, whether it be grants or loans, simply because they haven't been keeping their proper reports, or they're not willing to do their proper reports. Or they don't know how to do like projections, um, things like that. It's a lot of that comes back to know-how and people don't know, but they're missing out on that money. That goes back to proper expansion and more different pieces that could could have a big impact on economic development. And then on the diversification, um, a lot of our diversification could happen with the, um, collaboration. Um, competition, I always say competition is the nineties, there's enough for us to go around and we all know that. Um, but having businesses collaborate together, what new opportunities can we create, especially on the year-round market? If businesses would collaborate together and come up with either a new product or a new service or 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 bouncing back and forth? Uh, what new industries are needed within the community and bringing in those new jobs that are not tourism-related, which we've hit on um, a lot, and I hear all the time, this is just the way we've always done it. And I'm sure you guys hear that too. Um, can we just like leave that at the door and start thinking about out of box? Diversification is thinking out of the box, out of the box business development, out of the box business growth, out of the box workforce development training, out of the box ways of looking at problems. And, um, that's the verification in my, is the thinking out of the box and throwing out, this is the way we've always done it. Because the way we've always done it has gotten us where we are today, but the way we need to go in the future is thinking outside the box. So, that's my.
Oh, my, that was amazing answer. Wow. I made it.
It is five till five.
Yeah, I know. And Mary, it is, the reason I thought this is a really essential exercise, it's fairly asked the right question, is this a good use of our time? But for me, hearing the the breadth of ideas and the ways that we can move forward. Um, these are the kinds of words and ideas that don't get captured in a more tourism or less tourism. You know, and I think as we move forward and use this as a starting point for conversations in the community, after we just decide which of those particular after we decide which of those particular elements, discrete aspects of it that we wanna focus on, I think that that creates a real opportunity to move us forward and engage the commuting in a way that people start to understand what this economic development department is doing, why they're doing what they're doing, and, and how they, the department itself can be a catalyst for these kind of conversations. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So August, you have some concluding
Yeah.
observations and comments. There are some items from the agenda that I believe we can table for next meeting.
I think we're gonna finish it.
Are we gonna finish it?
Yeah.
Very, yeah.
So I tried to capture kind of some vertical conversations that I think would end ultimately start a handful of round tables focused on these, I think, these end up aligning very similarly with Megan's landing. But, you know, obviously, this, that's the big picture. And then the second, this big question is, what do we actually do? What programs do we fund? How do we intervene? So workforce development comes up again and again. Technical business assistance comes up again and again, providing some kind of low-cost capital to businesses, portable commercial space, whether we develop it or partnering with private sector, but generally bringing it up. Identifying and clearing impediments to development that we're looking for, how we define that. And then continuing to support baseline economic infrastructure, in this case, we do a lot of housing, childcare. So, you know, my thoughts here, and maybe including thoughts for the day, is think about these and, and if we're thinking about this as, as topics for individual round tables that would follow kind of a an open, a general opener, and we can have this style of conversation with anybody who's interested and then start to dive into, I think from our perspective, make sure we understand the system in which each of these topics operate. What are the resources that are already out there? How do we leverage them? What are the gaps and how do we step in and maximize them? And try to put all of that with a similar set of topics that are kind of on the tourism side of things. And put that all together into a larger process that, you know, has parallel tracks for each of these subject matters and have each one of y'all kind of working, or at least tracking and helping accountable one of these subsections forward with tandem there. So that's my first thought. So I think my reflection, because we don't have that really discussed this year today, would be, what are we missing? What do we wanna change? And then we'll have this basically the same conversation at Travel Council Board Meeting. And then, you know, Forrest and I and Jenny can kind of talk about potentially a joint meeting of both boards to kind of like bring this all together and, and kind of flesh out what, how do we actually start this? How do we do the timing? Who's gonna be involved? So, so that would be my, my call there. The, the last agenda item that let's fly through in one minute. Forrest, if you will, if you'll grant me the opportunity to move to that agenda item.
So grant me.
On, is looking forward for the rural county grant, rural county opportunity, rural communities opportunity grants. What, what's kind of before us? So I spoke before about this kind of deadline for fiscal year 23, that we have to get everything spent by the end of June. The same deadline really applies for diversification TRT. So, you know, my hope is that we start this conversation and that informs those decisions. It might not, you know, the conversation might not be to a point where it's like, well, here, we finished the plan, so now apply to the spend, but informing that conversation and then continuing stats that can inform our, our budget formation for 2024 and beyond. And within the context of rural county funds for this year, can grant funds. After we spent the, this year's money by June, we have until August, it's the end of August to report that money to the state. Once we've done that on September 1st, if we can satisfactorily fulfill the reporting requirements, then we're eligible to apply on October 1st for the next fiscal year grants program of that $200,000. And if Hasiu, in this case, had spent all of their money of the $300,000 that we got in the first place for the Sky and Arsh Development, we'd be eligible to apply for competitive grants on December 15th. So those are kind of the, the, on the rural county grant sides, the, the deadlines that we're thinking about in the future for this year. And then what's not on here is from our department perspective, that we're gonna start the budget process probably in August for all of the kind of TRT funding that we worked on. But obviously, anything grant related, we're gonna have to bake into that, you know, the planning related to that. You know, the statutory guidance, the child council provides. Can we bake into that? So my hope is that, you know, this kind of planning exercise influences all of the actual, you know, requests and grants and budget priorities and everything else from there. So that's, 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 that's what I have.
That's great. It is shortly after five. We had time for member comments, but let's save those for the beginning or early in the agenda at our next meeting, because that gives us some time to review Ben's summary of all the comments that we had without losing sight of the fact that the department has some very specific deadlines that they have to meet over the next couple of months.
Yeah, and then maybe email Forrest if there's anything you wanna put on the agenda. We'll do an agenda review internal sometime, like two weeks before the next meeting. And so if there's stuff that you all, y'all wanna have us discuss, send that to Forrest, so that Forrest can work on putting that agenda together.
Yeah. Thank you all online for joining us today. Thanks for your participation. Hope to see you around the table in one of the next couple of meetings.
And hopefully, we'll be back in the chamber.
I'm sorry?
Hopefully, we'll be back in the chamber.
We'll be back in the chamber, okay. Okay, thanks, everybody around the room. I would entertain a move. Jasmine was just waving goodbye. Okay. Entertaining emotion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded? Meeting, anybody who wants to stay on longer? Okay, all in favor of adjourning? Let's do it. Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned.
Nice work.
Well done. I was about to say, I don't know if we even need to do a motion or something. I think you may have the power to just adjourn a meeting.
It's my other world, I have to.
Yeah. That's great.
When I say, again, the meeting is, we reached the end of the agenda, if no one objects, then we'll. And then if somebody says, wait, I have something else to do, then you do it, but.
You just pretend you don't see the handout.
Wow, thank you.